...chambers and I sincerely appreciate your cooperation with this request. Welcome and thank each of you for taking time from your schedules, very busy schedules, I'm sure, to attend this meeting. And the first hearing that we have on the agenda.
Are you not doing?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are you not doing the regular council format?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm kind of getting ahead of myself. Let me take a breath and compose myself.
Three, five minutes.
Five seconds. No, that's all right. We do have a proclamation this evening declaring 2013 as the year of water education. I'm sorry, I kind of got my pages out of order for a second. And I'd like to know, are there any representatives from the Trinidad Water Festival present this evening? Oh, welcome. And would you care to step forward and say a couple of words for us?
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank city council for recognizing the proclamation this evening for the water festival. We've been working very hard. And Tom Perry would have loved to have been here, but he had another commitment, so I told him that I'd be here. So I'd like to extend the invitation to all of you. The festival is scheduled for Thursday, May 16th, I believe, beginning at 8:30 in the morning. So we're really excited and we've got several schools coming. Last year it was just the Trinidad School District. This year we have Homey, Primero, Trinidad, some of the online schools. So we're real excited. Looking forward to it. So we'd like to extend the invitation to all of you. Hope to see you all.
Very good. It is now my pleasure to read the proclamation. Whereas Trinidad area citizens experienced a successful inaugural Trinidad Water Festival in 2012, and whereas in view of the persisting severe drought conditions our area is experiencing, and in an effort to further promote public awareness of this most important and precious natural resource and the necessity of its conservation and protection, it is paramount to continue to educate the public. And whereas education and water awareness are fundamental steps in helping the citizens of Trinidad and Los Anamos County understand the growing needs for the limited water supplies and the need to find ways to enhance supplies and promote conservation, to provide water for all needs and uses as we continue to grow, and whereas the health and well-being of the citizens of Trinidad and Los Anamos County is decisively dependent on a clean and sustainable water supply. And whereas the city of Trinidad, purveyors of the water utility to community residents, has been a proponent of water conservation, responsible use and protection from pollution, recognizing that this resource is integral to our economic, societal, and environmental well-being and critical to our community's agriculture and recreational vitality. And whereas the city of Trinidad is committed to joining in the effort to educate our public on the importance of water and its conservation to ensure reliable and sustainable water supplies for future generations by participating in the community water festival and other educational opportunities and implementing conservation practices through a water conservation plan. Now therefore, I, Bernadette Baca Gonzalez, Mayor of the City of Trinidad, do hereby proclaim 2013 as a year of water education in the city of Trinidad to celebrate the value of water and stress the imperativeness of conservation and protection of our water resources. Congratulations and I did sign the proclamation. And I just want to share that with Mr. Perry and please give him our sincere thanks for all his hard work on behalf of the city.
Good job with it.
Now, we're back on track. Time for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Ms. Garrett, would you please conduct the roll call?
Bolton?
Here.
Panado?
Here.
Mateh?
Here.
Miles?
Here.
Shu?
Here.
Velazquez?
Here.
Back again, Thomas?
Here. For the record, a quorum is present and council may proceed with business. As I anticipate, this may be a rather long meeting. I do want to remind my colleagues on council that in the event anybody needs a little recess or a break, just ask for a point of personal privilege and we'll certainly recognize that opportunity. The first action item on the agenda this evening is consideration of approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of April 16, 2013, and the special meeting of April 23rd, 2013. Are there any corrections or comments?
No, I'd make a motion for approval of the regular meeting minutes of April 16, 2013, and the special meeting minutes of April 23rd, 2013.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. And the second?
Say the motion.
Second by Mr. Shu. Thank you, and we're ready for the roll call.
Bolton?
Yes.
Panado?
I have to stay on the special meeting of April 23rd, 2013 at 1:30 PM because I wasn't present, but I will approve the minutes on the regular meeting of 2013.
Mateh?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Velazquez?
Yes.
Back again, Thomas?
Yes. We have a guest in the audience who has some young adults with us, and I'd like to see if council would be willing to take an item out of order so that we can allow our special guest, Mr. Tony Diego, who's with the Third Judicial District Juvenile Diversion Program, to come forward and address us, and this would typically be part of petitions. May I have a motion to take that matter out of order? Motion by Mr. Mateh.
Captain.
And second by, it's the audience patrons, second by Ms. Velazquez. Any discussion or question? And I think we're ready for the roll call.
Bolton?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Mateh?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Velazquez?
Yes.
Back again, Thomas?
Yes. And Mr. Tony Diego, thank you for being here.
Your partner's up in the picture.
And welcome back there.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mayor Metter, members of the city council. Again, my name is Tony Diego.
Yes, sir.
And I am with the juvenile diversion program as well, a little earlier than a minute ago. The juvenile diversion program works with juveniles in the juvenile justice system that are first-time offenders that have committed a low-level offense. We're under the auspices of the district attorney's office as an alternative form of court process. All of the juveniles in our program have a minimum of 20 hours of community service to perform. We feel that the community service that our young people perform is a way to give back to the community. The project that we're here to talk about right now is a mural project that we have put together for the Kit Carson Park. We have run through the process of having a mural and the paintings approved by the Trinidad Arts and Cultural Advisory Committee, and then we also had a conversation with Mr. Aker about the mural itself. The Trinidad Arts and Motor Parts Department has collaborated with us to install the mural, maintain it, take care of it. We have, in the past, done several projects like this, and we've always maintained that if the mural is damaged beyond repair, that we will take it down or replace it. So what I'd like to do is give you all some brochures and then copies of the actual murals because they are completed. Is it okay if I bring these up, Tony?
Oh, yes, sir.
Thank you.
And council, in your packet, if you look at item four, there is the introductory information concerning Mr. Tony Diego and his program, and some absolutely outstanding, beautiful examples of the work that those young people back there have done.
Do you guys want to stand up for quick? The reason we choose art is because art has a beginning, a middle, and an end, and we try to teach young people that come into the program that you can't get to the end without going through the middle. So we give them a lot of skills that kids also have, the young people also have, a cognitive skill group that they have to attend. This skill group is anywhere from 10 to 14 weeks long, and we talk to them about decision-making, self-esteem, skill-building, and reinforce that with our community service projects. We really feel this is a good project because it's going to be out in the community, it's going to be in an area that is perfect for this piece. We really appreciate the city, you know, assisting us and partnering us and supporting us in this effort. The kids have been working really hard on this mural. There's four back there, but a total of about 13 kids worked on these pieces. So because of confidentiality, I kind of asked them to stay back there as I've been in photographs, but I did want them to be here just so they can see the process, feel what happens here, and be a part of it.
Well, God bless you all. Let me tell you what, these are every bit as beautiful as some of the leading artwork that you can find on Pendleton for Pendleton woven blankets and prints. I mean, these are outstanding. Congratulations back there, and I'd like to give an opportunity to council members to share their excitement over these wonderful.
Tony, I've kind of walked with you through this project, and this end result is amazing, totally amazing. I really want to thank you for everything you do for the children of this community and thank the children for what they are providing us with. Wonderful job.
Thank you.
And here's the council, Mr. Shu.
Tony, and thank you for some of the stuff that you have done with the community over through Main Street. This is excellent work, and it's nice that someone takes a real good interest, even past their job, to take care of you.
Thanks.
Likewise, Tony. Because of the nature of my real job, I have occasion to be a part of it with you and your program. You do a great job. Thank you, and I remind myself and others that to recent pencils have erasers, we make mistakes. Fix them and learn from them.
As the owner of Ricardo Henderson Blankets, I agree with Mayor Baca Gonzalez, and if you ever approach the Pendleton people, you can assure them of one buyer.
Thank you, Tony, for working with all these kids.
Just got to say, echo the same response to this council and to those boys back there. Excellent job. Very proud of you. Thank you, Tony.
And Mr. Diego, I hope that you have enough copies so you can share representative examples of this with the media because I think they would sincerely appreciate knowing what wonderful work these young people have done. And the old lawyer in me is saying, you all need to make sure you file copyright.
We will have a press release when we do the actual unveiling installation, so I'll make sure that's good.
We'll date it there.
We haven't gotten the date yet, we're waiting for today.
Please let us know.
We will.
Yeah, we'll be there. Thank you. And thank you to council for allowing us to take that out of order. Now, I'll see if I can get back on track. Oh, it's, we are ready for the public hearings. We have two new license public hearings this evening, and the first one...
A man in there?
Yes, sir.
Has signed up to speak.
Oh, I beg your pardon. We have additional individuals who signed up to speak. Since we did take that matter out of order, was Mr. Diego under the petitions and communications?
Yes, he was under.
Yes.
Okay. I think it would be fair for you to have your opportunity to address council now. I'm sorry I overlooked that.
It's okay. I just have to go home and pack. Terry Sears, Trinidad, and in keeping with Madam Mayor, councilperson, staff, and citizenry, in keeping with Madam Mayor's theme, I want to keep us on the tracks. This coming, I'm going to ask busy people to come up with a half an hour. This Saturday morning is National Train Day, and I would like any council members, any staff, any members of the community to show up and greet the Amtrak train at 9:50 AM. Hopefully it'll be on time, and a second I'll tell you how to check and see if it's on time. I'm going to, my father passed away recently, and they're having, he's a wounded Anzio bed, and they're having a military thing back east, so I won't be here, but I know you guys will follow through on it. And then when I get back next week, I will take the pictures that hopefully our media will take and get them to the train advocates that are involved in us trying to keep our train coming through Trinidad. I also want to get the word out that the council has been supportive of that effort to do that. So I'm going to have, this is a blown-up menu cover, and this is going to be part of a much bigger poster that says Trinidad, Colorado supports National, Amtrak and National Train Day. And I have a cute little Trinidad cheerleader who's going to be over there holding the sign, which increases your chances of getting media exposure. And if we can have a crowd there waving to the engineers and the people on the train with a Trinidad sign, when I get back, I will send that to the various people that are fighting to keep the train coming through here. The train's due 9:50 AM Saturday morning. It's train number three, so you call 1 US, 1-800-USA-RAIL, and the machine lady Julie comes on, and she will say to you, would you like to check train status? And you say, train status? And she'll say, do you know the train number? And you say, yes, train three. She'll say, what town? And you say, Trinidad, Colorado. She'll say, is that today? You say, yes. And then in a second, she'll come back on and say, according to her information, whether the train is on time or not. Most of the time, this one is one of the most on-time ones in the country, and hopefully it will be that way Saturday. So if y'all can make it, I would really appreciate a nice little crowd there so that we can send it out to the people that are fighting to keep the train coming to Trinidad.
Thank you so much.
And I hope you continue to be back on track.
Okay. Mr.?
I also want to add that I've got Anna checking with Amtrak on how we can get some Trinidad information on the train, especially on that day. We don't, we're not fortunate like our neighbors to the northeast, like La Junta, to have a shift change with a lot of people, a lot of time, but there is, I think, enough time, and we're trying to work with Amtrak to see if we can put together some information about Trinidad. So when they come back through, they hopefully spend some time in Trinidad.
And when I come back, I can connect you with a person at the National Association of Railroad Passengers who could be helpful in that too.
And I know Ms. Bolton and Ms. Miles have been very active in advocating for the rail service here in Trinidad, as has the entire city, who of course appreciate you reminding us about this important event.
See you next week.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Tom, do you know what La Junta has planned?
My understanding in talking with Rick Klein is that they are putting together some tourism-type bags and going to walk around on the train because they've done it in the past, and they said just the smokers got the information. So they're going to let the smokers get off the train, and then some folks are going to go on the train and give them some information.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Now, I've been champing at the bit to get to the new license public hearing. We got here now. The first public hearing is called to order. Today's date is May 7, 2013. I am Bernadette Baca Gonzalez, Mayor of the City of Trinidad, and I will be presiding over this hearing. This is a public hearing on an application for the issuance of a new beer and wine license requested by Mount Carmel Health, Wellness, and Community Center located at 911 Robinson Avenue. The procedure for receiving evidence concerning the applicant's request for issuance of a new liquor license will be governed by state law and city ordinances. The applicant, in this case, that's Mount Carmel Health and Wellness Center, has the burden of establishing that the city's granting of the applicant's request is warranted under applicable law. If the applicant or representative of the applicant is present and ready to proceed, could I please ask you to step forward to the microphone and identify yourself?
My name is Scott Cantland with Mount Carmel.
Thank you, sir. And I have to read a few more introductory remarks, so you bear with me. Mr. Downs, is the city prepared to proceed?
I am, Your Honor, and we are, yes.
At this time, I would like to give a brief overview of how this particular type of hearing will proceed. First, though, there will be an opportunity for opening statements or opening remarks by the applicant, and that will be followed by the same opportunity for the city's representative. After we do the opening statements, the applicant may present evidence and testimony of witnesses. Then questions will be allowed by the city, the licensing authority, and by interested parties, if any, who are qualified by residency and/or ownership of a business within the city limits. After the applicant finishes his or her presentation of evidence, the city will present its evidence and testimony of witnesses, allowing for questions from the applicant or his or her attorney, the authority members, which are members of council, and then any other party in interest. After the city finishes its presentation of evidence, then there will be an opportunity for a presentation of evidence and testimony of witnesses who are parties in interest, if any, who would then answer questions that may be posed by the applicant, by the city, or by authority members. Then we will have an opportunity for rebuttal evidence and closing arguments. At the close of the hearing, after rebuttal evidence is presented, if any, then I will close the hearing and I will ask for a motion and discussion. And legal counsel, Mr. Les Downs, has provided a very lengthy motion with findings of fact that I trust all council members received, I think you sent it by email, Mr. Downs?
Yes.
So whoever makes the motion has a little reading project. Please note that an executive session may follow the hearing, or the authority, that is the city council board, may choose to postpone its decision on the matter for a period of up to 30 days. At this time, I would ask that everyone who is to testify during this hearing to please come forward, identify themselves, and then Ms. Garrett will administer the oath. And I believe that's just going to be you, Mr. Cantland, and you, Mr. Downs. So Ms. Adra, I'll let you do your magic.
Please, Tara, for the money you're about to give will do the trick, the whole trick, and nothing else.
Yes, I do. May I?
Yes.
And you want me to proceed by way of questioning, Mr. Cantland? Go on.
Yes, I think basically the procedural rules, I think I need to explain that we're not following the formal rules of evidence, and that testimony and exhibits will be admitted liberally. In connection with testimony, I reserve the right to limit testimony or questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, or argumentative, and to set a limit on the duration of testimony if necessary. However, if those present have any objection whatsoever, you should raise your hand and wait till I call upon you to state your objection. I will then rule on the objection, and my ruling will stand unless a council member requests a vote on the ruling, in which case the admissibility of the testimony or evidence will be decided by a majority vote of council present. In connection with this hearing, the liquor authority has to announce the neighborhood boundaries, and in this case, I believe, pretty much in every case affecting the city of Trinidad, the boundary is the corporate city limits. Is that correct, Ms. Garrett? Okay. Additionally, I'll have you know that the application packet that you submitted has been provided to members of council, and it constitutes the exhibit of this hearing in addition to any other documents that may be offered by you, the city, or an interested party. So before I turn it over to Mr. Downs, do we have any questions? There being none, the hearing will now begin, and Mr. Downs, if it's more expeditious for you to cover the legal points through questioning, I certainly encourage you to do that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I know you will assist me should the need arise. Mr. Cantland, good evening. Would you please, for the record, just spell your last name for us, if you would? Thank you, Mr. Cantland. And could you please tell us, what is your capacity at Mount Carmel?
I do a little bit of everything from managing the events, to soliciting the events, to removing the trash, to soliciting legacy investments, to pursuing liquor licenses.
And I understand the latter is what has you before us this evening. Mr. Cantland, what is the business form of Mount Carmel? That is, is it a corporation partnership or sole proprietor?
It's a nonprofit, 501(c)(3).
And is it a corporation also?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. Is, could you tell us, if you would, please, who are the officers of Mount Carmel?
Jake Chino, Gina, no, Gina Chino, and Angela Anne Cesario.
Okay. And do you have a title, like a job, one-word job description with Mount Carmel? It's okay if you don't.
No.
Okay. But you are representing them, obviously.
Yes.
I don't mean to say the obvious, for purposes of this evening's hearing.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Cantland, were you, sir, the petition circulator, and the petition was circulated in support of your application?
Yes, I was.
And are you considered to be the individual responsible for the application this evening?
Yes.
Okay. Now, Mr. Cantland, you originally were going to be applying for a tavern liquor license, exactly?
And we were advised that that was the appropriate license.
I understand. And would you tell, I don't want to give testimony, do you know the title of the liquor license now? That is, you're not applying for a tavern liquor license. Do you know what it is, the type of liquor license you're applying for?
It's beer and wine only.
And would you tell the council why it is that that was changed from a tavern license application to beer and wine, if you would please?
Yes, because the sales of alcohol is not our primary business.
And for the record, and we all know this, I know I'm asking you a lot of easy questions, but...
Speaking of easy questions, thank you.
Yeah, that's right. What is the primary purpose for Mount Carmel, if you could?
For a health, wellness, and community center. We have primary care, behavioral health care. We also host special events for which this license will most frequently be used, weddings, parties, anniversary parties, that type of activity.
So to comment on...
And a cafe, please, and a cafe.
Okay. And I know there may be other things that you may be leaving out, but to state the obvious, the sale of alcohol is not your primary purpose.
Right.
Okay, that's why a beer and wine license.
Yes.
Mr. Cantland, when you circulated the petition, do you know approximately how many signatures you obtained?
Yes, individual signatures, probably about 35. Businesses, probably about 10 to 15.
And if you would please summarize for council what the results were of your petition circulation in terms of favorability versus non-favorability?
100% favorable in both categories.
100% favorable?
Yes.
You had no people who opposed your application?
Right, correct.
And if you would please, sir, you submitted the application on behalf of Mount Carmel. Sorry, sir, if I already asked that.
Yes.
Okay. And you have in here a map, not a map, but a layout or a blueprint of the premises, is that correct?
Several, several.
Yeah, I see that. And from your original submission, I have it, thank you, has the... the plan basically changed, the floor plan, from what you originally anticipated?
No, it hasn't.
Okay, was there an area that was left off your original submission?
Your original submission? It wasn't left off, it was, because it's on floor number one, it was hidden by floors two, three, and four.
Okay, so--
And we resubmitted this afternoon.
I understand, okay. And this afternoon was the additional floor plan that has the lower level?
Yes.
That was hidden by the upper levels?
Yes.
Okay, and, Mr. Cantlin, how many, how many events do you anticipate having annually, if you could approximate for council, where you're intending to sell alcohol?
Within all four or five levels?
Yes, all levels, anywhere throughout the premises.
Well, I've been told I better have 15 to 20.
Well, okay, so is that your target?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, not at all, not at all. You also, you had the individuals who were listed on the business, Mr. Chumino, Ms. Chumino, and Ms. Cesario. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, they all submitted to background checks, is that correct?
Yes, as did I.
Okay, and tell me, you were listed in the application. Are you going to be the day manager?
Yes, day and night.
Okay, okay. You're making my questioning very easy, sir, and I appreciate that. And you also submitted a background check.
Yes.
Is it correct that we do not have the results of those background checks back yet?
I haven't seen them. I don't know if anybody else has.
Is it anticipated that the background checks will come back, is approved?
Yes.
Okay. Now, Mr. Cantlin, any other liquor licenses that you are, that you are on, that you have an ownership interest in?
No.
Do you know if there are any others for Mr. Chumino?
Mr. Chumino, at one time, owned The World Arena, and I think he had a liquor license there.
Wow, but he no longer does?
Right, he sold that a while ago.
Okay. And as far as you know, no other interest in liquor licenses by Mr. Chumino?
Right.
And Mrs. Chumino or Ms. Chumino, same thing?
Yes.
Okay. Now, her name is listed on the application. That's Gina Stefanic?
Recent change in status.
I understand, I understand. But did I get her name correct?
Yes.
And that is how she's listed on the application, is that correct?
Yes.
And then also Ms. Cesario?
Yes, she's--
Okay, no other liquor licenses that you know of, certainly no other licenses in the community?
Absolutely.
Okay, Mr. Cantlin, I want to give you a chance to please, instead of just my stilted questioning, to be able to address council and say whatever you would like in support of this application.
Well, we've actually been hosting special events at Mount Carmel now for probably a year, a little over a year, using the temporary licenses that have been granted by this group. And so far, we've had no problems, no violations. And we think we're filling a void within the community for a nice meeting space for weddings, anniversary parties, as we have coming up later, the smut graduation party, two weddings in June. And we are very proud of the quality of event that we host. I think most of you were there yesterday, and all of you have been in Mount Carmel in the recent past. And it's a beautiful five-star facility, so one of our missions is to host five-star quality events, and that is to eliminate or at least minimize any activities that might not meet those standards. And so far, we, I think, done a nice job maintaining those standards. The reaction from the communities, you could tell by the 100% of support from the business individuals, petition signers, is that we've met that goal, and we are certainly going to strive to meet that in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Cantlin. And if I could, please, just a few loose ends. You, excuse me, you have supported financial documentation, is that correct?
Yes.
For the individuals that may hold a financial security interest in the business?
Yes.
And that's part of your submission to council?
Yes, sir.
And also letters of reference?
Yeah, we each had three letters in there.
I understand, and I'm just kind of going through, I want to make sure that I reference everything that has been in here. And again, you submitted to background checks in a timely fashion, but as far as you know, those results have not come in?
Yes.
Okay. When you circulated the petition on behalf of Mount Carmel, because you had a 100% approval rating, I'm assuming it was your understanding that people wanted this liquor license?
Yes.
And that it was their opinion that the facilities that now exist prior to your getting a liquor license were not meeting the needs of the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood?
According to all the signatures received, yes.
Okay. And I want to ask you also, the people, do you know how many people are going to be serving liquor at Mount Carmel? Do you have an idea?
Actually, the actual servers themselves?
Yes. Whether the bartenders, waiters or waitresses, do you have an idea what that's going to look like?
They'll all be tips trained, obviously. That's a minimum requirement. And we are very careful. In fact, I choose those who serve, and I'm very careful who I select.
Okay. And that was what I was getting to. They're all going to be tips trained and certified?
Yes.
Have you gone through that training?
No, but I think I'm the only one on the staff who has not, and I don't serve at all.
Okay. Again, good answer. Madam Mayor, if I may, I would like to defer to you and any members of council if you have questions.
Starting on my left, Mr. Benato, any questions for either the city or the applicant?
I see no problem with this answer, there, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Blasas?
Ms. Miles?
Is this the time to bring up issues within the--
Yes, certain, any questions you might have?
You mentioned that Mr. Chumino had an interest in The World Arena?
He owned The World Arena, yes.
Is that the source of the liquor license violations?
Yes.
Okay, is the group dating back to all of a sudden 2000, like?
I'm not going to show it to you, but he has a violation. There are others within this organization who were basically representing him in the operation of the arena, and they explained to me that one violation, what happened.
Was it one or three?
One.
And Councilwoman Miles, it's in there three times, I made the exact same mistake. It is all one?
It's all one.
It is, that's correct. I'm not sure exactly why, but it's so you have all the information. I'll put it this way.
Ms. Bolton?
I have no questions.
Ms. Shu?
I have no questions, but I found it to be very forthcoming and complete and thorough application.
Thank you.
And I don't have any questions. I believe, I'd like to give a final opportunity, making sure that we don't have any interested party in the audience that would like to be heard. And seeing none, we've disposed of that procedural issue. Is there any rebuttal or closing statement either of you would like to offer?
Madam Mayor, I have no rebuttal, and I have nothing further. However, I would ask you, as the presiding officer of this hearing, to please receive the submission from Mount Carmel. And in that submission, if I could, just so we're all clear, is, first of all, the application. And Mount Carmel is a nonprofit corporation, so that the record is clear. And that is their corporate form. You have in one of the, I believe it's really the third page of the packet after the application, you have a certificate of good standing from the Colorado Secretary of State. Again, that follows right after the application. For the record, this is the premises at 911 Robinson Avenue in Trinidad, Colorado. Following that, you have a series of diagrams that outline and lay out the premises to be licensed if you grant that. There's also a quit clean deed, individual backgrounds, I know those results have not come in yet. Then the promissory notes that are indicating a financial interest and a few financial commitments for the business. Then the order to show cause notice of hearing that was alluded to by Councilwoman Miles. And then, basically, you have the letters of reference following all that. So I would echo the sentiments of Councilwoman Matei. I think it is a very thorough application, and would just submit it without argument. I don't want to sound like I'm their attorney.
Oh, no, that's quite all right. The documents you articulated and described are admitted into the record, including the updated, I believe it's a floor plan that you mentioned.
Yes.
That is also admitted. Any other matters, Mr. Downs?
I have nothing else, Madam Mayor.
Do you have any final statement?
I just, I'm proud to be associated with Mount Carmel, and I hope the community's proud to be associated with Mount Carmel, because it is a community center. It's for everyone, not just for those who are hosting parties or celebrations. It's there for everyone.
Very good. And in the event you overlook the document, Mr. Downs, I'm just going to take judicial notice of the entire packet that was provided to City Council to make sure, it's probably redundant, but to ensure that every document is included in the record. At this time, I will announce that the public hearing is closed, and the time is now appropriate for us to enter a motion. Do we have a motion on this request?
I'd make a motion for approval of license, and will recite the following findings for the record.
Thank you.
This matter came on for hearing on the application of Mount Carmel Health, Wellness, and Community Center at 911 Robinson Avenue in Trinidad, Colorado, for a beer and wine liquor license before the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, acting in its capacity as the local licensing authority on May 7, 2013, in City Council chambers in City Hall. The City Council, having reviewed the application and supporting documents, letters of recommendation, reports of the city clerk and other city staff, petitions admitted into evidence at the hearing, and testimony taken during the hearing, makes the following findings. Number one, the neighborhood consists of that area located within the city's corporate limits. Number two, Scott Cantlin testified in favor of granting the license. No other persons testified in favor of or in opposition to the granting of the license. Three, the city clerk's report showed that there are 37 liquor licensed outlets within the neighborhood. Of these, there are four 3.2% beer off-premise licenses, one 3.2% beer on-premises license, one club license, 12 hotel and restaurant licenses, one of which has optional premises, eight liquor store licenses, and 11 tavern licenses. Four, the applicant submitted a petition regarding the liquor license application, which was admitted into evidence. A total of 44 signatures appeared on the petition, of which 42 were residents or business owners slash managers from within the neighborhood, 21 years of age or older, all favoring issuance of a liquor license at this location. No petitions opposing the issuance of a license were submitted. Five, the applicant, through testimony and other evidence, made a prima facie showing that the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood are not being met by existing liquor outlets, and that the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood favor issuance of the license. Six, based on the evidence presented at the hearing and the investigative materials provided for the hearing, the city finds that the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood are not being met by the existing liquor outlets, that the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood favor issuance of the license to the applicant, and that the applicant officers are of satisfactory moral character. Therefore, the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, as the local liquor licensing authority, hereby approves the application of Mount Carmel Health, Wellness, and Community Center for a beer and wine liquor license at 911 Robinson Avenue in Trinidad, Colorado.
Ms. Bolton, thank you. You did a fabulous job. Mr. Downs, since we haven't got the fingerprints back as a procedural matter, should we also add on to their contingent upon the satisfactory return of--
That is, that would be my recommendation, Madam Mayor, yes.
Is that acceptable to you, Ms. Bolton?
Absolutely.
Okay. So as a med, we've added that additional bit of language. And may I have a second?
A second.
A second by Mr. Shu, and I believe we're ready for the roll call.
Bolton?
Yes.
Benato?
Yes.
Matei?
Respectfully, I'm staying.
Miles?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Blasas?
Yes.
Baca Gonzalez?
Yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
And we're sure you're not going to have any trouble with fingerprints.
They haven't come back yet.
It's the gun thing.
The gun thing, yeah.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Your questions are very fair.
Thank you, didn't want to make anyone mad.
And Audra, you tell me when you're ready for round number two. We have another new licensed public hearing, so please bear with me, I've got to go through all this procedural stuff one more time. And again, Legal Counsel has kindly prepared a motion at the very end, and whoever makes the motion's going to have a reading project. Can we prevail upon you again, Ms. Bolton?
She has a memorandum, too.
Yeah.
Well, certainly.
Therefore, I will begin. This public hearing is called to order. Today's date is May 7, 2013. I am Bernadette Baca Gonzalez, Mayor of the City of Trinidad, and will be presiding over this hearing. This is a public hearing on an application for the issuance of a new arts liquor license request by Southern Colorado Repertory Theater Limited at 131 West Main Street. The procedure for receiving evidence concerning the applicant's request for issuance of a new liquor license will be governed by state law and city ordinances. The applicant has the burden of establishing that the city's granting of the applicant's request is warranted under applicable law. If the applicant or representative of the applicant, I'm sorry, is the applicant or representative of the applicant present and ready to proceed, and if so, could I have you please step forward to the microphone and state your names for the record? Harriet Beauchamp?
Jim Davis.
Thank you both. Is the city prepared to proceed, Mr. Downs?
I am, Madam Mayor, yes.
And Ms. Porce will be handling the presentation, and I liked how you did it last time, so you get an A+.
Thank you, thank you.
At this time, I will give just a brief overview of how this hearing will proceed. As you heard in connection with the previous one, there will be an opportunity for opening statements or opening remarks, and then the applicant will have the responsibility to present evidence and testimony of witnesses, and there will be an opportunity for questions. After the applicant finishes, then the city will present its evidence and testimony. And it really may be more expeditious if we have Mr. Downs elicit the information you need to provide through the question and answer, and unless you have an objection to it, that's how we'll proceed. There will also be an opportunity for rebuttal evidence, if any. And this time, I'd like to ask, are there any parties in interest who will be offering evidence in connection with this hearing? And seeing none, I will note that there are no parties in interest. After I close the hearing, you should know that the council could go into executive session, and the authority may choose to postpone its decision on the matter for a period of up to 30 days. At this point in time, I will ask that Ms. Garrett administer the oath to those who will be providing information.
Do you swap, how long you swear on the testimony you're about to give, and the truth, the whole of the whole truth?
And once again, I'll just remind everybody that the formal rules of evidence will not apply, and the testimony and exhibits will be liberally admitted. If there's any objection by any party, you just raise your hand, I'll recognize you, and then we'll deal with that objection. Part of the procedure is the announcement of the neighborhood boundary, and in that respect, the local liquor authority has set the neighborhood boundary as the corporate city limits. And before we get-- And before we get underway, are there any questions about our procedures? And seeing none, Mr. Downs, I will let you commence.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Good evening. It's a little unfair, because you guys have already heard someone else go through this whole thing, so, no, seriously. Would you please, and first of all, is there going to be one that will be answering the questions primarily, or will both of you? You don't have to limit yourselves.
We're going to take turns.
Okay. Of course, it sounds great. Would you please state your full names and spell your last names for the record, if you would?
Harriet Vouchois, last name V. as in Victor, A.U., G.E., O.I.S. as in Sam, every vowel.
Thank you, I didn't realize that. Sir?
My, my full name is Vernon James Davis, D.A.V.I.S.
Thank you very much. Would you please, we all know you and we know of your organization, but you are here to represent the applicant, Southern Colorado Repertory Theater. And would you, and I'm sorry, you're going to have to answer out loud, if you would, please. We're tape recording everything, so if you would, please, just answer with an audible yes or no, unless I ask for an explanation. Would you please tell the council, what are your capacities with this organization? What is your capacity?
I am the executive director and president of the board of directors.
I am a board member and have volunteered to oversee the liquor license activity if approved.
And the form that this corporation, are you, first of all, is S.C.R.T. a charitable organization?
It is 501(c)(3), yes.
And what form do you take? Are you a corporation, partnership, or obviously...
It's a corporation.
It is a corporation. And what, if you would, please, is the stated purpose for this charitable corporation? You can just approximate, we all know.
We present live theater and educational training in the area of live theater.
Peter Pan, I believe, was your most recent production, is that correct?
It was. Do you all believe?
I'm sorry, I could answer that. I ask the questions, no, just kidding. How many, if you're granted this license, how many, how many occasions do you anticipate selling alcohol on an annual basis?
Our professional season will start in mid-June, and we will have thirty performances of three professional shows. We now operate year-round, and our goal is to have at least one performance a month. This month, we have two. And during the regular year, those performances are with our local people, our local performers.
And the premises we're talking about, is it 131 West Main Street, is that correct?
Yes.
And you, your, your organization leases that building, is that correct? And that lease is part of your submission to council? And how many people are on the charitable corporation? How many individuals are there, if you would please?
We have twelve board members.
And how many, do you have officers? Is that how you...
Yes.
Okay. And how many officers are there?
Three.
For the record, if you would, please, Mr. Davis, Ms. Vouchois, how many are going to be listed on the liquor license? But I know we have the application, but how many?
The president is listed on the application, and I am listed on the application as the manager.
Right. And only the two of you are going to be responsible in this liquor license?
Yes.
Okay. And if you would, please, we know that there has been an existing liquor license. Would you please tell us what form that has been? Mr. Davis, I know you know about that.
Yes, historically, the Southern Colorado Repertory Theater had sought special event licenses going back approximately six years. Those were only applied for during the professional season, when they were performing at the Mousari Auditorium. With the economy and the lack of funding opportunities locally this past year, the board made the decision that we should take advantage of the opportunity to increase revenues in any feasible way and manner possible. And this was one way, because we found through past experience that the attendance at our performances and the experience the attendees had was enhanced by offering alcoholic beverages prior to the, the beginning of the, of the plays and presentations and during the intermission.
Okay. Now, Mr. Davis, and Ms. Vouchois, you also originally had a tavern license application submitted, is that correct?
That is correct.
Would you please tell council why you changed your mind and changed the form of the license you're applying for?
We were informed last Thursday afternoon that, under the state guidelines, a theater did not qualify as a tavern applique applicant. Therefore, we revised that to a arts liquor license application.
Okay. And, and you had a petition circulated as well, is that correct?
That's correct.
And would you tell council about your favorable results on that?
We had, once again, as the prior applicant, we had a hundred percent of the, those signing the applications, signing an approval of the application. We had eighty-four total, total signatures. We had thirty-nine businesses and forty-five individuals. There were two individuals that I spoke to that declined to sign because of their personal feelings about alcohol consumption.
That was the reason they gave you for not wanting to sign?
Yes, they chose not to sign either way.
Anyone who simply opposed you or opposed your application for any reason other than personal...
No, not, not at all. And, and they were very, very supportive and have been attendees to our productions, but from a personal standpoint, did not want to sign, sign the approval.
Now, Mr. Davis and Ms. Vouchois, you also, do you know what it's going to look like in terms of who's going to sell alcohol and how? I know you've been doing this, but, but the number of people you're going to have...
We have, we currently have eight people who have gone through TIPS training. We have three people who have volunteered to go through the next available training, so there will be eleven people. I intend personally to be at every possible event that will be there, and I will rotate the volunteers, so no one gets abused.
Got it. So, will you have all your employees serving or handling alcohol?
No.
Tips, they will not all be TIPS trained or certified?
No, we, at the, at the productions, people approach the bar area individually, and they interact with the two people who are, who are serving the alcohol. We don't have waiters and waitresses as such.
And I, I have been to a production or two, and I've seen that, but the bartenders, then, you, you will only have bartenders, for lack of a better term?
Yes.
But alcohol servers?
In general, we will. If, if there is a need to have someone serving, if we have a table arrangement, then everyone who does serve will be TIPS trained.
That's, that was what I was getting at.
I want to make sure that's very clear. Anyone who has anything to do with alcohol will be part of our TIPS-trained staff. And they're not only TIPS-trained, but we do our personal training.
Thank you.
So, the, the term in general, I thought, was a little ambiguous. Otherwise, I think Jim's doing a wonderful job.
And I didn't mean to be ambiguous, I'm sorry if I did not have a question. Is there anything either of you or both of you would like to tell council in, in furtherance of your application for this liquor, liquor license?
Well, I would just like to say that I really appreciate the, the advice and counsel and the assistance that we got from the city staff. I mean, it, it's really been excellent. The game, the game, the playing field somewhat shifted on us through this process, and, you know, it was the diligence of the staff that kept us on a timeline that we were able to be prepared for this.
And I also would like to make a statement in terms of what S.C.R.T. is trying to do for this community. I don't know of any professional theater that doesn't have this amenity for patrons who choose that as part of their theatrical evening out. But being on Main Street in our own theater now, and having this professional amenity as part of the evening is just very, very rewarding for the hundreds of people who volunteer their times for this organization. So, I really appreciate the time that you are all taking and reading the pages and pages required for this. Thank you.
If I could, please, you have submitted, as, as part of your submission, background checks?
Yes.
Okay. And have those results come in, as far as you know?
Yes, we received those last week, I certified, ma'am.
And were they approved?
Yes.
No problems with your background checks? Okay. And you've also tendered a blueprint or a, a map, a layout of the license premises? Now, so we're clear, I, I just want to make sure, your intention as a business is to serve alcohol when you have theatrical productions that are presented to the public?
Theatrical productions and any special events.
Okay.
There, that was a part of the application, that's correct. And under the, under the conditional use permits that the planning commission approved, it states that that is the only time that alcohol will be served.
Is for those two kinds of events?
Is for those two kinds of, of opportunities. And, and that is, so it's not a situation where we have a, a seven-day-a-week or five-day-a-week, eight- or ten-hour-a-day operation.
And if I could, please, do you know, Mr. Davis, Ms. Vouchois, is there any other, is there another arts license, liquor license, in the community?
Not according to the list, but I believe...
No.
That's correct. But, but thank you. And so, yours, as far as you know, would be the first? Madam Mayor, council, any, any questions? I'd turn it over to you.
At this time, I'd like to give council members an opportunity for questions, starting on my far right, with Ms. Bolton.
I have no questions.
Mr. Shu?
I always have a comment. I do believe.
Given the cultural contribution that you make to our community, and the fact that this amenity will enhance that for those who choose to participate.
Ms. Miles?
No questions, good luck.
Ms. Valeska?
Well, I did hear you say that with this beer and wine license, that they're only going to be used for your performance, am I correct? You're not going to open up during the day?
No, that, that, that is part of the conditional use that the city planning commission approved. Is, it, it limits the, the hours, well, limits the use of that license to our performances or special events, correct?
Well, yeah, you, because I see that, you know, because there's so many liquor licenses in the area, is what I'm saying. You got one right next door, or across the street from you.
They are for-profit corporations. We are a nonprofit corporation. Our liquor operation is actually a fundraising opportunity for us.
I understand that. Did you get to talk to any of them?
All of them. Well, not all of them, because some of them don't open before I go back up the hill.
Oh, name one that you talked to. Name one to me.
Well, I talked to Pat Mantelli, she's a hundred percent in favor of it. I talked to the people owners of Bella Luna, they're a hundred percent in favor of it. I didn't get the signatures from, from the tap house, because they weren't open, but Gary is very supportive of it.
Okay.
And I didn't get the signatures from the, from the Mission at the Bell across the street. So, those are our closest proximity...
Yes, yes, because there's so many licenses in that area.
And in actuality, people are very excited, because at the end of a play, we're not selling at the end of the play, and the audience goes someplace else to get...
Next door.
Right next door, across the street, Mission at the Bell, they go for a little dessert and perhaps another libation, including the actors. Mr. Bernado?
Mr. Davis, you know, I have a lot of concerns, and I talked to you for about an hour and a half on the phone the other day, and you kind of brought up some answers for me on my questions that I have in, in our packets. We receive those answers or whatever. I'd like to go back to that Mount Carmel deal. The reason I voted for, for the new beer and wine liquor license for Mount Carmel is that I feel that that neighborhood is not satisfied with liquor outlets. I mean, there's no other liquor outlets within, I don't know, a mile there, or half a mile to, I don't even know, Bob and Earl's have a liquor license. So, there is no liquor license there. And that's why I would recommend Mount Carmel to have a liquor license. My, my question is to you, is that it seems like we're going to open a can of worms on this council. Because if we go ahead and offer you a regular liquor license, what are we going to do with our other nonprofits? Like the, like the Arturo Mitchell, or, or Hispanic Chamber, just off my head, why can't they come to us and say, well, the S.C.R.T. got this as a nonprofit, why can't we get a license?
Mr. Benado, Councilman Bernado, I think, if you remember in our conversation, I made one statement, and that was that if you could assure us that we could get forty-five special event licenses per year, that we would not have applied for a regular license. And in reality, this isn't a regular license. This is a limited-use license. And that limitation is put on us by the conditional use permits afforded by the planning...
That was a loophole that you found out later on the Thursday, on a Thursday, that you just stated to this council?
No, 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 no.
That you found out Thursday about this license?
I'd like to correct that.
That's what you said.
I'd like to correct that, because what we are talking about is, is our, how we will serve liquor. Back when the planning commission, over a month ago, met, and we presented our, our application to the planning commission, their decision was that we would be allowed to, to serve liquor only during our productions and special events. That is all. No other time. In addition, in addition, if we were to, if we were to leave the premises, which was one of your other questions, and we were to discontinue operating, that that conditional use permit would expire at that point.
The other question that I had for you also was that, if we, as a council, when you were applying for a regular liquor license, we would not have no more authority to you, which you could say, well, we're going to open from seven, from seven, uh, 5:30 at night till 7:00 P.M. at night? Now, you stated that this isn't going to be that way, that you're, you're going to just do this for...
The, the conditional use permit, and wouldn't, you remember that meeting, right?
Yes.
Yes. The conditional use permit says that we aren't open any other time but our productions and special events.
Right. That's what I'm saying. And that's what this consists of, this new arts liquor license, right?
No, no, the original tavern license was, was stipulated that way. The original, when we had the tavern license application, it stipulated the same thing. That came before we ever came to the council with our tavern license application.
And if I can interject, the comment of what happened last Thursday was when we found out we could not apply for the tavern license. That's the only change, and that's why...
Why was that, why was that brought up, that you couldn't apply for this tavern license?
I'll let Mr. Davis, he answered it a minute ago, I'll let him answer again.
I, I was informed by Audrey that she had been informed by the State Liquor Commission that a theater would no longer qualify for a tavern license. This, this is not something that was special to us. There are a lot of licensees currently in the state that are going to have to reapply for a different type of license or vacate the one they have, because the liquor commission last Thursday made a new rule, or a new, just a new determination.
And, and that's exactly what Scott Canlin was explaining, why they had to vacate their tavern license, same, same situation.
I just, it, it's just a, it's just a thought in my mind, that's laid with me on my mind for a long time, since you applied for this, and, and I think that the neighborhood there is satisfied with enough liquor outlets. I, so, what I'm saying is, you know, I'm not against a special liquor, liquor license when you come. I don't know what the problem is, just because you said it only covers forty-five events.
No, the, the current law only allows fifteen special event permits a year.
Well, what's the problem coming back to council and asking for a special permit?
Because we're only, we have, we have over forty performances on the schedule.
Counsel, Benado, if I could, please, the license they had, which was the, the special events... Counselman Bonato, if I could please, the license they had, which was the special events permit, only allowed for 15 events per year. Okay, and so they have more events than that, and that's why they wanted another liquor license. And I believe it was kind of thought that the most appropriate liquor license for them was going to be a tavern liquor license, and that was not the case. And we were informed by the Department of Revenue that that could not be the case unless your primary purpose for existence is the sale of alcohol, and that's not the case. And I'm sorry, sir, I'm just trying to help.
And if I could just make one comment in terms of conflict of interest or opening up a can of worms. We're the only theater company in Trinidad.
In other words, I know you're the only theater, you know, theater production here. And I told you in my last report, you know, I think you guys are a great asset to our community. You're a great entity to our community. You're helping kids. You're trying to do. But where do we draw the line on this kind of stuff? I mean, as far as liquor license are concerned, where do we draw the line? I think maybe next week I might come to council and say, well, I'm going to ask for a liquor license to sell alcohol at my house. You know, where do we draw the line? That's all I'm asking.
And I appreciate what you're saying, and I don't mean to interrupt. And I guess that's a decision that council makes. My job is to find a way to keep this theater alive in this community. And moving into a new facility without the funds to turn it into a theater has put us in critical jeopardy. I don't know how we will survive if we can't have the support of council in allowing us this opportunity to make a little bit more money than we can make on our ticket sales. Our only option would be to raise the cost of coming to the theater, and that goes against the very mission of our organization. We want to make this accessible to our community and particularly to the kids. And I am not being dramatic. I know that you've got other issues to deal with, and I guess that's your problem. And I am just hoping that you will see the value of granting us this license at this critical time.
Then, do I have one more question?
Yes.
How married are you? What happens then, say, God forbid, then in six months' time, that the SCRT has to move? Then you have to reapply for another liquor license. Am I correct on that, Mr. Downs?
That is correct in that a liquor license goes with a premises. That is, you were licensing the premises when you have a liquor license application. And I didn't look at how long their lease is, and I'm sure that either one of you could tell me how long.
It's December 31st, 2014.
Okay, so another year and a half. And how long were you at your prior location?
We did not have a prior location, but we rented the Masari for our performances, and we begged and borrowed space to rehearse. But we had the special events license at the Masari on and off for the last five or six years.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say one other thing before I close, ma'am, Mary, is that, you know, I'm just worried about the other nonprofits doing this. I mean, like I said, where do we draw our line? If we give it to you, we give them to Mount Carmel, we have to give it to Mitchell, where do we draw our line? And that's the only reason I'm really worried about this. And I think that that neighborhood, as far as Ms. Mantelli is concerned, as far as you take two steps out to the lights, you're at Bella Luna's. You take one step out to the right, you're at Mantelli's. You take 25 steps over and you're.
Well, I'd like to just add the fact that since we did move into that building, Bella Luna, the Mission on the Bell, have both been very generous donees, donors of food, snacks, et cetera, for some of the performances and fundraisers we've had there. We're all good neighbors. We want to see them survive. We want to survive. I can't sit here, stand here and tell you that they are negative to our existence there. The question of how many liquor licenses you have in the city of Trinidad is your purview. I really don't think it's in our position to answer or even give an opinion on that. What we are asking for is the opportunity to open up another source of revenue that will be in operation in a limited time, limited to the times we have productions and events.
I just have one more question. Keep thinking of these.
Okay.
This is the last one.
Well, I'll do it now. That's fine.
All right, and you're done, and I get to go.
As far as the floor diagram, I guess we have a picture of it in here, which shows the maximum capacity and stuff like that. What happens, is there a doorway or any kind of barrier for the mezzanine that goes upstairs?
Yes, there are two exits from the mezzanine. One comes directly down to the rear exit on the main floor. There is another stairway that goes down and comes right out a door on Main Street. There are two Main Street exits. There is one exit back into the parking lot behind. There are three exits.
Okay, Madam Mayor, two after.
Thank you. I understand that there's been the change in the types of license and permits recently. And I did a little research this morning and took this definition from the liquor, State Liquor Authority's website. And they say arts license permits qualifying nonprofit corporations and municipalities to sell malt, vinous, and spiritus liquors to patrons of artistic and cultural performances for consumption on the premises in connection with such performances. So it sounds like it's tailored specifically for a venue such as SCRT. And with that, Mr. Downs, do you have any closing statement?
Madam Mayor, I would ask you, please, as the presiding officer, to accept the documents that are part of the submission. And if I could please very quickly refer to those. That would be the application, the commercial lease with SCRT. There's a documented memorandum that is dated March 19th, 2013. Then we have the diagram of the premises and the different levels. Then we have the individual history records, the letters of reference for the individuals, and then other supporting documentation, and of course, also the petition. And I would ask, and I probably should have asked this of the applicants before I was making that motion. But, Mr. Davis, Ms. Beaujouin, when you were circulating this petition, is it fair to say that other restaurant owners in the area not only told you, they supported you, but they signed your petition?
That's correct.
Including Ms. Mantelli?
Yes.
Including Jude Lucero, Mission at the Bell?
Yes.
Did Jeff Quinn or Sandy Nichols of Bella Luna sign your petition?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I'm having a little difficulty in making out some of the signatures. Any other restaurant or bar owners in that neighborhood that you know of that signed?
Well, the people at Fabulous Wings signed. The Corner Cafe signs. Mr. Corvina at Greenfield signed.
Okay.
The people at Gritz, they don't open up before I head home, but the people at Gritz have been substantial donors of some equipment to SCRT.
Okay. Last couple of questions. One is, do you have theatrical productions?
Oh, excuse me, also, the Laquita.
I saw Si Michaels.
Signed.
Okay. Do you allow juveniles in the premises when you're having theatrical productions?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and do you card everyone who comes in there if they're buying alcohol?
Yes, we watch that children are supervised there. We don't have children running around unsupervised at our productions. And our liquor sales are really not consistent with what you would even have in a restaurant.
Explain that, please.
Well, people come to the bar individually and purchase directly from us.
And then we have two security guards who are always monitoring, watching who buys, where they sit. And then there's a totally separate snack bar where there are things for kids.
And also making sure that no one wanders outside of the licensed premises with it.
No beverages leave the interior room. We actually have a public announcement before the performance is announced, it states that.
That no one is to leave with an alcohol beverage.
And we have a person at each exit door.
And just one last series of questions, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to take so long. If you could, please, can you approximate for me the number of adults at an average theatrical production that consume alcohol? Percentage-wise, approximately?
I would say it is probably no more than 20, 25% of the audience.
And then what percent? Okay, what percentage of your revenue does do alcohol sales constitute?
At this point, it'd probably be 10% at the most.
Okay. All right. I have no further questions, Madam Mayor. I would, again, move for the acceptance of their submission and support of their liquor license application.
The entire packet of exhibits is admitted into evidence. And I know you had prepared a motion, but I noticed on page 3B, it says, "To date, fingerprint results have not been received." Would it be appropriate for us to do the same qualifier on this motion as we did with the last one?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Subject to receipt of acceptable fingerprint feedback from law enforcement.
Please, and it sounds like Mr. Davis got the results of the background checks. Did you say you did?
We got a certain definition.
That's the gate of record. That would have been fingerprint.
So fingerprints are still outstanding. I just wanted to be sure and clarify that.
Please, and if you would, ma'am, with that caveat.
All right. I believe at this point in time, I will announce that the public hearing is closed. And it is time for us to consider entertaining a motion. Do we have a motion on this request?
I'd make a motion for approval of license and will recite the following findings for the record. This matter came on for hearing on the application of Southern Colorado Repertory Theater Limited, doing business as Southern Colorado Repertory Theater at 131 West Main Street in Trinidad, Colorado, for an arts liquor license before the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, acting in its capacity as the local licensing authority on May 7th, 2013, in City Council chambers and City Hall. The City Council, having reviewed the application and supporting documents, letters of recommendation, reports of the city clerk and other city staff, petitions admitted into evidence of the hearing and testimony taken during the hearing, makes the following findings. One, the neighborhood consists of that area located within the city's corporate limits. Two, Harriet Beaujouin and Jim Davis testified in favor of granting the license. No other persons testified in favor of or in opposition to the granting of the license. Three, the city clerk's report showed that there are 37 liquor licensed outlets within the neighborhood. Of these, there are four 3.2% beer off-premise licenses, one 3.2% beer on-premise license, one club license, 12 hotel and restaurant licenses, one of which has optional premises, eight liquor store licenses, and 11 tavern licenses. Four, the applicant submitted a petition regarding the liquor license application, which was admitted into evidence. A total of 84 signatures appeared on the petition, of which 84 were residents or business owners slash managers from within the neighborhood, 21 years of age or older, all favoring issuance of a liquor license at this location. No petitions opposing the issuance of the license were submitted. Five, the applicant, through testimony and other evidence, made a public face showing that the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood are not being met by existing liquor outlets and that the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood favor issuance of the license. Six, based on the evidence presented at the hearing and the investigative materials provided for the hearing, the City Council finds that the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood are not being met by the existing liquor outlets, that the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood favor issuance of the license to the applicant, and that the applicant officers are of satisfactory moral character. Therefore, the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, as the local liquor licensing authority, hereby approves the application of Southern Colorado Repertory Theater Limited, doing business as Southern Colorado Repertory Theater for the Arts Theater, for an arts liquor license at 131 West Main Street in Trinidad, Colorado, contingent upon favorable results from print and background information.
Motion by Ms. Bolton, and thank you again for doing an excellent job. And a long call. And second by Mr. Schu. Any discussion or question?
I actually have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Both licenses were voted on contingent with their background and fingerprint results.
Yes.
Both applicants applied for concurrent review with the state, which means their license may be available as early as this week. Am I to wait until fingerprint results are received?
I would say as soon as it's issued by the state. Wouldn't the state also have that requirement about fingerprints?
They would. They would. I, yes. Does that answer your question?
I just wanted to make sure I could go ahead and issue.
Yeah, as soon as the state says go.
If something were to come back, City Council could always take that back up.
Yes.
As a separate matter.
Yeah, our presumption would be that if the state has issued the license, we don't have any concerns with fingerprints or background checks. I think we're ready for the roll call.
Bolton?
Yes.
Bonato?
No.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
It's same.
Schu?
Yes.
Velazquez?
Yes.
Back to Gonzalez?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
And at this point in time, could we have just like maybe a five or six minute break? We've been here since 6 o'clock, and I think everybody needs to get up and move around. Thank you so much for your patience. I promise we'll pick up speed when we reconvene. So we're off the record temporarily at 8:30 PM.